Good afternoon. Welcome to the December 2 Salina City Commission meeting. I'd like to ask the city clerk if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided.
Yes.
Thank you. In that case, I'll call the meeting to order and ask for roll call.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God and God invisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no awards and proclamations, so we will jump right in with the citizens forum. This is an opportunity for anyone to come to the podium to address any topic that's not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. Please give your name for the city clerk.
My name is Stacy Lundquist. My address is 10965 West State Street, Brookville, Kansas. I'm a longtime Saline County resident, and I'm also a National Director for the American Paint Horse Association. The topic I want to discuss with you today is our Saline County Expo. First off, I'd like to make the remark that an expo center or any event center supports and hosts a multitude of events such as livestock shows, trade shows, private parties, community events, and so many other things. However, my experience in area of involvement with the expos with horse shows and the equestrian community, so that's what I will speak about today. Respectfully, I don't think that the city commission, the county commission, fully understand the impact that the closing of the Saline County Expo will have, not only citywide, countywide, but statewide as well. The horse community in Kansas suffered a devastating blow in 2012 with the closing of the Kansas Calceum Complex in Wichita, Kansas. The effects have been felt in the years since as we have watched our large breed shows move to surrounding states like Oklahoma, Missouri, and Nebraska to find facilities with the availability to host our large breed shows. Admittedly, it was a blow to our pride to watch our shows that are founded in Kansas leave this very state that should be supporting agriculture and making strides to grow involvement in the ag community. I'm going to refer to an article I found on KSAL and remind the parties involved that the expo center generates an estimated $3 million in economic impact for the city of Salina. That was before the announcement in April of this year that the largest equine event in Kansas was planning to call Salina its new home. The Equifest is expected to attract 20,000 people to Salina in 2020 and estimated to have a $1 million impact for that one event. When that announcement was made, a collective sigh of relief could be felt through the horse community that this event would help secure the future for the expo center. Now, it appears that Equifest's time in Salina may be over well before it had a chance to really begin, along with so many other run-longing, run-long-running events that have called Salina home for decades. Another point I'd like to bring up is it's largely the city and not the county that benefits from the economic impact that the expo generates through the hospitality tax on hotels and restaurants and through sales tax generated by the visitors who frequent the expo. Yet, the county has agreed to be spending the $5.7 million in the renovations that we, the horse community, have been requesting for years in order to attract more events to Salina and build larger shows within the state. There is a need in the state for event centers with the capabilities of hosting mid- and large livestock shows. If you've ever tried to book available dates for horse shows, you know that there's often waiting lists for facilities like Hutchinson, Topeka, Lyons, or Kingman. I've heard references questioning the current need for the expo center and if there will still be a need for it to exist in 40 years. I can tell you as a longtime agricultural, um, person involved in agriculture, as long as agriculture is alive in the state, there will always be a need. As a longtime Saline County resident and as a horseman, I'm asking that the city and the county keep our expo open and secure a long-term lease. That way, our much-needed improvements can be made. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Justine Staten. I'm representing Kansas Horse Council and Equifest of Kansas. My address is 8831 Quail Lane, Suite 201, Manhattan, Kansas, 66502. As you know, we are visitors to Salina, bringing our three-day equine expo event to Salina on March 6th, 7th, and 8th in 2020. We expect our average, as you heard Stacy mention, our average attendance is somewhere around 15,000. We also have probably 2,000 that are non-paying because they are exhibitors, or they are vendors, or they are volunteers and staff. So, we bring a lot of people to town from all over the U.S., so our vendors will come from New York and Minnesota and all over. We do contribute positively to the economy wherever we have our show, and we were looking forward to a long-term commitment here, maybe making this our forever home because we love the location of, of the facilities in Salina. I do understand that lease negotiations between the county and the city are somewhat of an impasse, and there's a possibility that the county may be considering no further negotiations. And that's heartbreaking to me, as we're just in our first year of planning for an event with, with the idea and concept of at least three years, if not more, and like I said, potentially 10, 15, 25, or a forever home. And so, that's why I'm here today. It's my assumption that difficulties in this agreement may be due in part to capital requirements and, and the timeframe that those capital requirements are, are occurring in. And as I understand, the county in a normal year has expenses for the expo center somewhere around $350,000 and income of $85,000, but they're asked to make aesthetic improvements which do not necessarily impact the function and flow of the facilities. So, I'm making a request to the city today to consider offering something of a contribution towards the aesthetic improvements, if that's even possible, that have been requested or suggested in these negotiations. And of course, I don't know those details, but potentially leaving the county to manage those deferred maintenance and other functional improvements that might help grow attendance and help with the revenue on that end of it, as just an opportunity or an effort to bring the county back to the table for further negotiations. The location of the expo center is, in its proximity to Tony's Pizza Event Center, is necessary for Equifest to operate because we utilize both campuses, and we take up every square inch of both campuses with our event, I assure you. The expo center is also necessary for the continuation of many annual equine shows, as Stacy had mentioned, and also the Junior Dairy Show, the Goat Show, and the regular 4H and FFA events, plus the Tri Rivers Fair. Kansas cannot afford to lose another equine and livestock venue as these are becoming lesser available. As was indicated before me, there's a historic relevance to Ag Hall Arena and the Saline County Expo Center that exists. The Ag Hall Arena, I understand, was built in 1922 with war bonds, and so I look at that as a, a piece of history that should be preserved. There is also, I want to say, I'm very impressed with the staff at the, at the county facility expo center. They're very savvy, and it, it takes folks like that that know livestock shows to make these shows run flawlessly, and that skill is only honed by experience. So, now, I understand it's not a one-sided negotiation here, and nobody is one-sided at fault. I'm just hopeful that our plea today will encourage both sides to come back to the table and, and further considerations that might make a long-term contract doable so that we can continue with Equifest and all other shows that are hosted there. And I'll be making the presentation tomorrow to the county as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks for traveling this far over to make sure we're still at work.
Deborah Corrales, can I give you some handouts?
On Friday, April 14, 1989, the Kansas Supreme Court upheld the right to municipalities to have and enforce breed-specific legislation. That was almost 31 years ago. They probably based their decision on bad information or the lack thereof. The Humane Society of the United States even locked in on all the hype. Now, 30 years later, the Humane Society speaks against BSL. I have to think that based on all the new information from experts, their studies, the Kansas Supreme Court would come to a different conclusion as the Humane Society of the United States has. In 2014, Luntz and Global, I don't know if you've heard of them, oh, they are a survey for politicians, and they do national surveys. In 2014, they did one, and 84% of the American people believe that federal, state, and local governments should not tell citizens what breeds of dogs they cannot have. With all the repeals in the recent months, I believe that 84 is a low number now. Since October 1st, South Point, Ohio, Kennewick, Washington, and Sioux City, Missouri have repealed their breed bans. Also, in the last two years, over 100 cities in the United States have repealed their breed bans. Junction City is also processing and getting their BSL repealed. States that have made BSL illegal, Arizona, California, Colorado, Connecticut, Delaware, Florida, Illinois, Maine, Massachusetts, Minnesota, Nevada, New Jersey, New York, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, South Carolina, South Dakota, Texas, Utah, Virginia, and Washington State. In my investigation of BSL, I came across some financial information about Kansas City, Kansas Animal Services estimate that they spend 1/4 of their $1 million budget yearly enforcing BSL. It's not cheap, and it's not worth it. That's 1/4 of a million dollars, $246,000, taking good dogs from good homes and good people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Davis, may I ask a follow-up question of staff? I've been looking on the agenda planner. When do we anticipate looking at the breed-specific legislation? I know, I appreciate Ms. Corrales showing up here week after week after week, and I wonder when, when's it going, when's it going to come to us?
My goal remains before year-end, and we're running out of meetings between now and year-end.
Right.
I realize that. So, haven't put it on there just because the draft is not far enough along that I can confidently identify a date, but we're down to the next couple of weeks.
Okay. But the, the plan is still before the year-end?
That's my goal, yes.
Good afternoon.
My name is Yvonne McCarthy. My address is 8601 East 55th Street, South Derby, Kansas. I am here on behalf of the Expo Center. I'm the manager of the Salina Charity Horse Show, which has been ongoing since 1941 in this community. I would just like to add my voice to agree with what Justine and Stacy have said and point out that our two-and-a-half-day show, which is just one event, I understand, at the facility in 2014, according to the Chamber of Commerce newsletter, generated over $25,000 in, to the economy. We routinely bring in approximately 100 horses, and so that number, it just goes up. We do benefit the economy. We publish advertising in our national breed magazines, so the Salina area gets national attention because of what we do. On Facebook, we have a national audience. I know we are only one event, but I did want to add my voice. I went back and looked at the League of Women Voters webpage, and Mayor Trent, I noticed that you had said, "Salina will be a town that is respectful of its heritage. Throughout Salina, the adaptive reuse of historic and architecturally significant buildings would be encouraged, along with the potential rehabilitation of brick streets, et cetera, et cetera." And I truly, truly hope that you can take that to heart as you consider the situation with the county and the lease for the expo center. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Abby Jansen. My address is 2305 Avenue T, Geneseo, Kansas. I am a member of the American Quarter Horse Association and a member of the Kansas Quarter Association, Quarter Horse Association. I am a direct board member of the Palomino Horse Exhibitors of Kansas and a PHBA, which is Palomino Horse Breeders of America Amateur National Board Member. And we, my direct Kansas-Palomino Association hosts our June show at the, at the Salina Expo Center. We have a great turnout. Once again, kind of tying into what Stacy and some of the others spoke to, we have a national audience. Salina, Kansas is a well-advertised location for our Midwest, as well as across the country, for bringing exhibitors and vendors into Salina. One thing I would definitely want to make sure that everybody knows, this is a, Kansas is a crossroads state, ag state. This is a crossroads ag community. We have to continue our strong ag presence. It's expected of us. People, I also, little sidebar, I run an Airbnb. People want to know about agriculture. We've got to keep that, that vein live and active in this area. People want to know about our ranching and farming backgrounds and lifestyles. And it's not just, you know, I have a passion for my horse shows, but we've got to keep these activities present and top of mind because it is a constant battle right now. Salina, you guys, we, we have so much to be proud of right here. We have a brand-new downtown. These ag, ag events can bring, bring revenue into downtown. We'll fill up the hotels, which seems like there's a new hotel popping up every month, which that's to be commended, and we're at that significant crossroads. And tying into what Stacy said, the Kansas Quarter Horse Association, as well as the Kansas Paint Association, our biggest shows are conducted out of state. We, that's, we need to change that. And Salina's sitting in a great spot with being at a crossroads of I-35 and I-70 to allow that to happen. People want to try different venues. They want to try different locations, and that's some, you kind of write those shows down, like, man, I had a great time in Salina, Kansas. I want to go back next year, and that's how we build. So, with those, those things in mind, I just ask that we come to a conclusion and come to an agreement to keep the expo center open, maintain its heritage and its history, but also add some key updates and improvements to help keep bringing those great events to Salina. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kelly Smith. My address is 1506 East Mona Street, Wichita, Kansas. Some of you received my email that I wrote the other day. Thank you for responding to that. I really appreciate it. It's good to know that there's people on the other end who are reading what we are sending and actually have ears on the community as a whole. I've been in equestrian for 36 years. I've been a 4H leader, both as at the club level, also with our dog projects or their horse projects. I can't begin to tell you guys about the people who use these arenas. Anyone in this room can tell you what it's like to go out and, and chop ice buckets at, you know, 6:00 in the morning before you go to work, and they understand what hard work really means, and they're not afraid to go out and do it. But we have to have all of you here, too, on our side to help preserve our heritage and help preserve these places for us to show our talents and to show the rest of the world what agriculture means to our state. This isn't just a hobby for a lot of us. This is our lifestyle, and I understand that from the outside looking in, that might look a little weird to people. Like, why on earth would you want to get up at 5:00 in the morning to go band your horses' mane, to go hurry up and wait all day in the 100-degree heat wearing your heavy clothes? I get it. We're a weird bunch, and that's okay. Everyone has their thing. So, but for us to continue to do this, we need all of you guys to go to bat for us and be willing to keep our heritage and to keep our places alive for us to do this. And it keeps coming back, it seems like, whenever I would talk with county commissioners and with you guys, it's, we don't want someone to be in 30 years in this same spot. We don't want them to have to be arguing about this 30 years from now. The thing is, we're not setting people up for an argument later on. We are guaranteeing to our kids and the kids who come along that there will be a spot for ag in Kansas. We are saying, we're giving this as a gift and saying, "This will be here for you. It's going to be your fight to carry it on, but it's here for you to fight for. And if you take it away now, what are they supposed to do in the future? They're not going to have it there. You can't just take the rug away from them whenever they've been working so hard to get to the levels that they're at." And 30 years from now, it might be a completely different world than what we're looking at right now. I'm sure that if any of you think back, when you were teenagers, could any of you pull out a cellphone and order a pizza? Could any of you pull out a cellphone, oh, a cellphone at all? Could you, could you pull these things out and do what you can do today and think how it's going to be different in 30 years? We don't know what it's going to look like, but if we take the, the solid foundation away from everyone, we aren't even going to know if we're going to have anything to fight for. They might not just, it might just evaporate. What are we going to do then? But at least if we, if we say now that we want this to be there for our future generations and we guarantee it for 30, 40 years, it'll at least be there for those people dedicated to it to fight for. And everyone's been talking about Equifest as well. If you've never been to Equifest, all I can say is, it is packed tight. There are so many people there from so many walks of life. You can't hardly get down the aisles someday. I've tried going on Fridays, early Saturdays, late Sundays. The place is just packed with people. It is a huge draw for not only the equestrians in this area, but from people from different states. When I lived in Missouri, I would drive all the way to Wichita from Kansas City just to go to this event. And it's not just me. There's, you know, Sedalia, there's people in Peculiar, Missouri, there's people in, you know, Pleasant Hill, Missouri. There's farms all over the place, and these equestrians come down to this event. So, it's not just, you know, two or three people from Kansas who come to this. This is a huge event, and I don't want Equifest to come here and then, you know, bring all this money in and then like, eh, you guys were okay. I mean, this is really something that can really help this community out, and if this is its permanent home, I really think you guys will be thrilled with the way that it turns out for everyone involved. So, thank you for listening to my comments. You guys have a good day.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Mr. Brown.
Eric Brown, here with the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, kind of talking to you directly about, or talking to you about the direct impact it has on our organization. One of the things that the chamber does that many people don't know is we have an ag committee. We've had an ag committee for a very, very long time. That's one of the things that you look at. Salina, overall, our economy isn't really driven by agriculture directly. However, you get 30 feet outside of our, our city limits, and it's all ag, and the folks that are coming in and spending the dollars are all ag, and there's a big ag market as well in and around. So, the chamber and the ag committee, we have the Mid-America Farm Show. We're going to experience our 54th coming up in March, and that has always been at the Expo Center and Tony's Pizza Event Center. And that represents how many years of investments from this board or this commission and the, the county commission as well. So, really, one of the things I wanted to share with you as well is, in 2019, either shows that have happened at the X, I'm sorry, at the Expo Center or are booked for the Expo Center will have about a $1.8 million direct economic impact, estimated $1.8 million, and that's a conservative estimate. So, not only losing on sales tax, but from the business community, you're also losing on folks that come in and want to maybe buy new things, maybe buy tires, trailers, et cetera, fill up our hotels. And so, that represents 10 events in future events that are looking for growth potential at Salina, in Salina, excuse me. There's five events that right now Visit Salina is working with, conventions and ag-related events at the Expo Center, and that would represent about $600,000 in future direct economic impact to our community. So, with that, I will keep it short and sweet. You all are, are getting a lot of feedback, not only today, but it sounds like via email. We would just encourage you to, to continue to work with the county and find a, a meanable decision to come together and, and keep this Expo Center and keep the, the generations of previous investments at the facility and try to make sure that we can grow this long-term. Thank you.
It's a short agenda. We have time.
Mayor, I don't want to get ahead of any public comment, but I did want to offer a little bit of information before we move past public comment, so I'll let you determine whether we're done and...
Well, I'll let you go ahead and if, and if someone who gets courage after you get done, we'll keep the podium open.
And then I've got something I'd like to add to.
Fair enough. As I, as you know, and I think as, as those in attendance know, we don't have the Expo Center on the agenda, and I was going to address this in other business, but I wanted to make sure that everyone heard this before they left without realizing there might be some discussion. So, I know I'm empathetic to the decision that the county's having to make in terms of the financial commitment and, and kind of that prioritization, and I'm pretty confident you're empathetic to that, too. And I'm appreciative of the county's approach that they've taken, the demeanor of their communication, their, I think they're, they're trying to make a difficult decision. So, we didn't put it on your agenda, recognizing that they were going to have more discussion on Tuesday, and what they provided so far is, is a draft communication, recognizing they want to have the opportunity to hear public comment before they give us a formal response. So, my intent, and, and after that decision was made, I think the, the comments started kind of coming in to you as the city commission. So, my intention during other business was to note that and offer to assist you in, in a couple of ways. If you want to add that as another business discussion item for open discussion, we can facilitate that. If you feel the need to have executive session discussions about it, we probably need to give you some detailed guidance in terms of your prior deliberations and open session, what may or may not be eligible for executive session discussion, but that, that's a big if for you to take up possibly under other business. In recognition of what the county's intending to do, my initial thought and my continued thought is we probably need to be deferential to them, to let them run that process and then, then pick up our discussions and deliberations, but if there's some sense on your part that we need to discuss it today, then you have the opportunity to amend the agenda, and staff would be happy to try to assist you with that.
Commissioner Hay.
Well, I'd just like to say is, you know, I don't want to wake up one morning and hear this, hear the thing, "A sad day in Salina." And a sad day in Salina to me would be us closing or doing away with the Expo Center. I'm only one of five up here, and I think a lot of people know how I voice my opinion. Like I said, I had no problem with the 40-year commitment. I would ask my fellow commissioners to please revisit. Let's take a look at this. Even though we've had countless negotiations, I still think there's, I still don't think it's impassable that we can't do something. I think it would be a sad day in Salina, like I said, if we had or if we did away with the Expo Center and not take advantage, and also looking at the economic, economic impact that, that it would cause. And I think it's going to cause a big, not only this year, but in years to come. So, I ask my fellow commissioners that if there's any way that we could at least sit down and discuss this again, I really think it's something we need to do.
My comment would be, that's a possibility, Commissioner Hay, but right now, I don't believe that would be relevant in the fact that we haven't received an official letter from the county. They're having a meeting tomorrow. They're going to listen to public input. I think after that, we'll see where they, you know, what direction to take. I was going to ask that the individuals are here in support of the Expo Center. How many of you went back and what meeting did, what date was it we had our meeting that we discussed the Expo Center and...
The joint public meeting?
No, the one we had where we came up with the 25-year lease with the three, five-year... Anyway, I guess I'd ask, how many of you have gone back and have had a chance to review or to watch our, our meeting?
Number 13. Number 13.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be the...
So, I think that speaks a lot as to where we, where we stood and that we were still, I think, in those conversations, you, you heard me say, "We were still open to negotiations," and I think we still are. So, at this point, I think we'll just have to, in my mind, wait and see what the county comes back with. the county comes back with. As I was thinking about this, and I know, I, I understand where the county's coming from, um, one of the ladies made a comment that they generate 80-some thousand a year income and they have 300-and-some thousand a year in expenses. I mean, from a fiduciary standpoint, I think the county commission's taking a hard look at that, um, based on their budget and what they have coming, coming before them. One of the other things I thought about is, uh, Sling County's, um, always been, or Salina's always been strong in public-private partnerships and wondered if anybody had thought about stepping up and, and maybe some way doing some, uh, private-public partnerships to help keep the Expo Center open also. That's how we came up with this, um, opening the Stiefel Theater, the, the Salina Field House, uh, you know, the, the, uh, uh, there's other, the soccer complex and it's what we're looking to do with the baseball. So I think that's something that if, uh, the, that community's really interested in, that might be a, a way they could look at, uh, at helping, uh, get to a number that everybody could live with. So, those are my comments.
And I think that the only thing that I would, I would like to add is I would just like to make sure that everybody here is aware of the offer that we extended to the county so that, you know, so that we're all on the same place. Speaking for myself, a straight 40-year lease, um, I have, I'll be very honest with you. I have concerns with a lease of, of that length for a variety of reasons. And the way we structured our current, um, proposal to them to get to a 40-year lease, which I acknowledge that that's, you know, that's what, what they want and that's what we're trying to find a way to get to, was for, and feel free to correct me if I'm mischaracterizing this, Mike, but, um, a flat 25-year lease guaranteed and with three, five-year extensions, which would allow both parties to come together, you know, at those five-year intervals past 25, to take a look at this and say, are the, you know, are the, are the renovations holding up? Do we need to put more money in, into maintenance? Is the, is the facility still viable? So that we, it would set a timetable for us to have some of these discussions. And the bottom line is, that does get us to 40 years. So, I just want to make, to be very clear on, um, the proposal that we sent to the county commission. And, you know, if that's not acceptable to them, then, you know, that, that's their decision that I guess that they're going to have to be making tomorrow and then we'll see where we, we go from there. But until we've received a definitive answer, I'm not really, I'm not really sure that there's anything for us to do at this point until we know one way or the other how that's going to go.
Well, so you leave it for the one person who grew up in the city who barely knows which, which way you face when you sit on a horse. Uh, but, yeah, I appreciate the comments, talking about the ag and the question heritage in Kansas. And not just that we're at a physical crossroads in the country, but in our crossroads for decision-making, economics, long-range planning. So, you know, it's a structural and a, and a philosophical crossroads. I won't talk specifics about negotiations, uh, right now, uh, but we have the city and the county looking at the, the same issue just from slightly different, different views. Uh, I'm a firm believer in get set on the ends and find a, a means to get there. My wife would also tell you that if it wasn't for the last minute, I wouldn't get anything done. So, it seems like the 11th hour, uh, County Commissioner Vidrickson, I know has me on his cellphone, I think, because he says yes, trying to find call him and vice versa. Uh, so I expect our phones to be ringing sometime in the next 24 hours. Uh, but, uh, we, we just have to redouble our efforts to see where the common ground is. Uh, but, you know, the process has to, has to run its course. And, uh, we've got 10, 10 bright people and a lot of, uh, staff helping us. I, I don't think we're beyond, uh, resolution at, at, at this point. So, uh, keep your bags packed for Salina. And we will, uh, await further communication from the, from the county. Uh, but, but I have to believe that middle ground is out there somewhere.
So, if I might offer to recap, one thing that occurred to me is you could go ahead and amend the agenda at this point and add a discussion item if you're so inclined. And I'm not saying that you should, but that, that might be an opportunity to communicate to those in attendance, whether you, whether this kind, is the extent of what you intend to discuss this evening or whether you wish to discuss it further later, just so they know whether they should stay or go.
Well, I was trying to read our city attorney's body language and I wasn't... But that, that thought had crossed my...
Well, and I'm trying to read consensus a little bit. It sounds like, uh, at least three of you indicated, uh, a desire to let the county kind of run their process and then, then take the issue up. But if that's the case, I don't know that you need to add an agenda item to today, today's meeting, but, um, in the interest of trying to communicate to those in attendance your intentions, it might, you, you could take that action right now to amend the agenda so that they know one way or the other. So, lack of a motion kind of indicates your intent not to proceed in that direction today.
I'll leave it up to my colleagues and, and, and should say that, you know, there are, I know, there's a lot of talk about this commission going to executive session at times. There, there's some aspects of negotiation which are very difficult, uh, to do, uh, in this, in this setting. Uh, our city manager and city attorney keep us, uh, very much in line with what we can or cannot discuss behind closed doors. Uh, and I don't know if there'd be any further revelations of opinion other than what you've just heard, but, uh, if there's a desire to discuss it further, uh, certainly welcome a motion to add it to the agenda. Hearing none, I think what we will do is wait to hear from the county, uh, but, uh, ready to think out the box if we have to and, and, uh, keep, keep moving. There's a lot of minutes between 11 and 12 o'clock at night. All righty. Does anyone else want to come up to the podium before we close the citizens' forum?
My name is Justin Jansen. Address is 27350 Paw Paw Creek Road, Alma, Kansas. I represent the Kansas Horse Council and, um, the community of Salina, both city and county, hosted an event for our board of directors in the preparation for our decision to come to Salina to hold our Equifest event. And Dr. Davis, at that meeting, you said that, that Salina was not a can-do community, it was a will-do community?
You were paying attention. All right.
And I would hope that you would reinforce that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tracy Rep and I live at 2872 11th Avenue in Lindesburg. And I'm here on behalf of the 4-H Kids. Um, you know, everybody's talking about, um, the impact and the money. Um, what's the impact of maybe in negotiations, um, the city helping and the county helping to make it a good place for the kids to do what they need to grow up and all of the things that they learn, um, going to the events at the Expo Center?
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, those of you who have traveled, come on, I do appreciate you taking the time to...
Kelly Smith again, 1506 East Modest Street. Sorry. Um, is there a possibility to have a special session, like in an evening or on a weekend, where you can have more of the public be able to come up and comment on this? Maybe come up with ideas? Because four o'clock on a Monday, I was able to get off work, but, and I'm sure a lot of other people really had to make an effort to be able to come up and speak with you guys. Um, I didn't know if there was a possibility of doing a special session in an evening or on a weekend, like a Saturday or Sunday? Um, just to put that out there for, if you guys would be able to come up with something like that, for more people to be able to come so you can hear more voices and how we feel about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we've had just general public comment and public education sessions and evenings. For official meetings, uh, weekends probably won't go over too, too easily right now. And we've been discussing the, the start times. Probably won't get that changed in the next two weeks, so...
Well, I, I was going to just say, speaking, speaking for myself, I'd be open to any kind of, you know, an, an evening session or a joint, something that I, I, we had suggested in a previous communication was hosting another joint meeting with the county. Because I think a lot of times when you're sitting around a table trying to find a solution together, um, you're going to have a lot, you're, you're, you're going to actually find a solution as opposed to sending letters back and forth and viewing it as purely a negotiation. I mean, if our true goal here is to find a way to do this, I would welcome the opportunity to sit down with the county commission again and see what we can get worked out, whether that's an evening, whether that's a weekend. It, this is a, you know, it's, it's, it's a conversation that we need to have and we need to have as many people participate in it as they can. So, thank you.
Which stressed to county colleagues, the desire to have a joint meeting is still on the table. I think, uh, any day other than Sunday, we can possibly consider. Uh, we will move on in our agenda to the consent agenda. Makes it kind of easy to, uh...
So move, we approve?
Second.
Moved and approved to, moved and seconded to approve our minutes from November 25th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 19-11020, amending sections 42-503 and 42-504 of Salina's sign regulations to clarify what types of signs are and are not allowed in the public right of way.
Okay, this ordinance was passed on first reading on November 25th. Uh, no comments have been received since then. Any update or, or any changes to this?
Not familiar, man.
All right. Uh, any commissioners have any questions, comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Any action to be taken on this?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 1911020 on second reading.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 19-11020. Uh, vote by roll call.
Commissioner Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. Action carries five to nothing. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, resolution number 19-7772, establishing water and wastewater rates effective January 1st, 2020, and a comprehensive fee schedule of the city of Salina.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The item that I'm bringing before you today is our annual, um, amendment to the water and wastewater rates. Uh, as you know, we review this annually and we establish a five-year projection of revenue and expenses. We do this so that we can look forward and we can try to avoid rate shock as we propose different rates for our, our consumers. Some of the things we look forward for in, in the expenditures is we look at all the day-to-day operating expenses, but we also look at what our debt payments are and what our projects are going to be in the future so that we can start building up those rates so that we could, don't have to come and have a $28 million project and raise rates 15 or 20 percent. The items that we look at to determine revenues that we believe that we will have are the number of accounts and also the volume of usage that the, uh, that we use for the water and wastewater. Uh, this year, we're proposing a 3.5 percent increase in the applicable fees. This increase would increase, um, for a small, for a low user, which is about 2,000 gallons a month, their bill would be increased by about $1.25. For a normal, typical residential user that, um, uses 8,000 gallons of water and 6,000 gallons of sewer, would be about, an increase of about $3.14. And a higher user, which is 20,000 gallons of water and 8,000 gallons of sewer, would increase about $5.68. As I mentioned, these recommended rates are intended to provide short-term operating, um, needs and long-term capital needs for the water and wastewater utility. I also provided you, because we had been requested, what did our bill look like 10 years ago? What does our bill look like today? And, and assuming that we would prove, continue our 3.5 percent increase over the next 10 years, what would our bill look like in 10 years? And that's the information that I provided to you, um, at your dais. So, at this point, I'm open for any comments or questions that you may have.
Is, is this a 3 percent increase of some baseline value or is this a...
It's 3.5 percent based on our current fee. So if our fee today is a dollar, we're increasing that by 3.5 percent. So, the numbers that you're looking at for future years, it's compounded.
So, those are compounded increases?
So, 3.5 percent this year and then on that new number, we'd be 3.5 percent of that number and 3.5 percent of the following years. Is that what you were asking?
I was trying to figure out how to do the math quick enough to figure that out.
Yeah.
All right.
And looking at the projections and, and where we were in 2010, uh, without doing any calculating, what has the annual increase been from 2010 to 2020? Do you know, Debbie?
I ran the averages over the last five years and the average increase for the water meter itself was 3 percent. For the water consumption, it was 4 percent. For the sewer monthly fee is 3 percent and the sewer, um, consumption was 3 percent. That's over the last five years. I didn't carry that back to the 10, the five years prior to that. However, what I did find is the five years prior to that, the rate increases were all over the place. Some, one year we had a 10 percent increase, the next year we might've had a 2 percent increase. So they were really all over the place in the, in the period between 2010 and 2015. But we also did in that time period was, we got new meters and we also went, and Martha can verify this, from gallons to, from cubic...
Cubic feet.
Feet to gallons in that time period. So I think there was some adjustment in those numbers too. So I just looked at the last five years.
So, and that's what, just at first glance, it looks like, uh, the amount of increase we've had over the last 10 years has been approximately what we're looking at now...
Right.
If I had to, so...
Right.
Is there any scenario in which decreased expenditures would result in a decision in any given year to not put that increase through?
Absolutely. Because we look at this every year, so we're looking at what our actual, we're basing our information on actual information from 2018, budget for 2019 and estimates, and budget for 2020, but everything going forward is a projection. So as these numbers change every year, those, those numbers could come down. We also look at what we have in capital reserve and what we have in projects. And as you know, we have two major projects going on right now that, once you rebuild the water plant, you're not going to rebuild another water plant, I hope, very soon. So those are just things that we look at every year. So it's very possible.
If I may, I would add to Debbie's comments that, um, page one, I guess, in the background, there's a list of some of the key assumptions that go into this rate analysis. And there's, there's a few projects in there that are pretty sizable, the wastewater plant and the groundwater remediation in particular. If we're lucky enough to realize some savings, that might be an opportunity to, to revisit rates and, and not have to raise them as much. Um, if you, if you look at the very first item, just annual increases in operating salary, supply, services are assumed at 3 percent. So that, that's kind of almost an unavoidable cost. But then there are also two areas where we're assuming $2 million of expenditure annually, one of those being water line replacements beyond 2021 and system enhancements. And so if, while it may not be a savings, that's a possible decision point in the future. If you, if, are uncomfortable with rate increases and we don't have, see other opportunities, we may have to visit whether we remain committed to spending $4 million a year on those two items.
Just real quick, um, obviously, the water line replacement is self-explanatory, but in terms of system enhancements, what, what all falls underneath system enhancements?
Martha may be able to speak to that better than I can, but sewer lift stations and...
Okay.
Maintenance items, I believe.
All the other things that keep things moving?
Yeah, admittedly, admittedly backing away... Yeah, admittedly, admittedly backing away from those numbers is essentially deferring maintenance, which is, you know, something we're trying to be proactive about, but if we become uncomfortable, that might be where we have to look.
No, I was just curious as to what system enhancements were. I had that down just to ask about.
Yeah, it's the maintenance items.
It typically includes our sewer rehab projects, point repairs, TV inspection, manhole cleaning, lime lagoon, pump stations. It's everything else that isn't a treatment plant, so to speak of. It could be pumps, just all the other items that fall in a water and wastewater system. So, it's a wide range, and there's also equipment and vehicles, which is probably fairly explanatory, but often, there might be a few pumps in there, and then we do some building and facilities improvements. But they're really all the basic maintenance items in 60 or 59 lift stations. We try to do a couple a year, just so we can get done in 30 years.
Do we usually bump up against that $2 million on an annual basis?
We haven't in the last year or so, because we have so many projects under construction. I just don't feel good about putting any more pressure on the staff to oversee them in the field. So, we're, I talked to Debbie earlier about maybe bumping, needing, we have a couple projects designed that we'd like to bid in 2020 that aren't, that are in 2019. So, next year, we'll probably bump up against it, I'm guessing, based on things we have laying on the shelf.
So, in the event that we're not able to spend all that down, that's a reserve balance consideration in the future that we could look at.
What do we have in our reserve balance approximately? Do you know?
I think it was in the presentation, but I think it's right around $8 million, if I'm remembering right.
I was gonna say the same thing, so it must be true.
I think that's the reserve, not necessarily the fund balance.
That's not the fund balance, that's the actual capital reserve. The fund balance is, it's in here somewhere. At the end of 18, we had $9 million as a fund balance, and then we have an additional $7.8 million in the capital reserve.
Do we have target balances for those?
We do $5 million in the operating account, and we don't have one for the capital reserve.
So, we're well over that. So, we do, we would have a little bit of breathing room as far as rate adjustments and stuff.
And we have been trying to save up in anticipation of some of these big-ticket items we knew were coming.
Yeah.
And also for economic development projects that are kind of lurking in the wind, to have some dollars available for some of those larger improvements for water and sewer.
I had a, just had a question. In the staff report, it says future rate increases are projected to range from 3% to 4% through the analysis period. And I was just curious as to what is the analysis period through, like, 2030, 2031?
We actually do a five-year look, but we've actually, that's what we present to you as a five-year look.
Right.
But we actually look, have been looking at it closer to 10 years out, just so that we can kind of keep that on our horizon. But five years through 2024 or 2025, and then we've actually looked out to like 2036 to make sure that we can still, and as we get farther and farther out, and some of that debt pays off, then we can look at some of the, some changes depending on what's going on.
Right.
And you may recall from the study session conversation, but through that process, we identified a few years out where the fund balance was gonna get below our target, and we might need to make decisions about spending out of capital reserve.
Right, and that's kind of, I just pulled out my study session information from a few weeks ago, and I noticed that it looked like that we got significantly below our target balance, like in, gosh, 20, was it 2026 or something? And then we start to rebound in 2027? I don't know if I have that tagged, but it looks like also that in 2024.
We start in about 2023 and 2024, and you'll know, in 2021, in those, we have the wastewater plant coming on with debt, and we've also turned that $2 million water line replacement into cash instead of debt. So, there's a couple of things happening around 2021, 2022 that are gonna affect that cash balance right then. But then, as you look on further, we do start to rebound that, because some of the earlier debt that we've got is starting to pay off.
Right, and refresh my memory, when was, when do we start rebounding? About 2027, 2026?
I don't know if I have that in front of me.
I think, I.
I think it was 2026 or 2027 that it starts to come back up. There was about three years in there that, yeah.
Right, okay. And it looks like that in 2024, the days of operation in reserve, we look to have about six months of those, but in 2024, we're actually gonna get down to only like 67 days. And so, I guess my, maybe I'm going about this kind of backwards, but to me, it looks like we're committing to these 3% to 4% rates, probably at least through like 2027, until we get some of this debt paid off, and we get back on the right side of this. So, you know, we're looking at, you know, five years now, but really, it could be close to like eight years.
It could, but however, what Mike said, you have a couple of decision points on those annual spendings.
Right.
We also have that reserve balance that we can utilize if we so chose.
Right.
In different ways to, you know, to kind of level out that fund balance, so that we wouldn't go as low. In the study session, as you remember, we kind of, we talked about possibly using that reserve for the $2 million for a year or two, or for some, or for the remediation or something like that. So, we have some options that might help level that up and down fund balance a little bit, that might level that out a little bit.
Yeah, I think your description of that fund balance and days in reserve is accurate compared to what we presented. That was all based on leaving that capital reserve untouched.
Right.
If we make some decisions about spending that down, we can keep that balance at a level that hits our target.
We can keep the, we can keep that target balance above, or at the $5 million mark.
Right.
Okay. And I just want to specifically thank both you and Ms. Tasker for presenting the typical water bill analysis, looking at 2010, 2020, and 2030, because something that Mayor Davis touched on earlier about the 3.5% being a cumulative increase, I think it just behooves us to take a look at 2010, and the typical water bill was under $50, and by 2030, it's gonna be $130. So, 3.5% doesn't sound like much, but over the course of years or decades, we're looking at a pretty significant increase in water bills. I mean, double or triple. So, I just think that it.
But we also have to take into consideration, there's inflation and other things.
Right, absolutely.
The cost of, just the operating cost is a huge, has a huge effect on that.
And I was just trying to imagine what type of conversation would have to occur six or seven years from now, to where that, because 3% in any one year is gonna look like a small number. But what?
Right.
Where we would say, you know, let's not raise that rate 3% this year, because we have enough money in these other accounts, as opposed to yielding to the temptation, wow, we have an extra $300,000 here this year, we can move that, or we can spend it on this, or, I don't, do we, is there any way to watch ourselves so that we would, somewhere down the road?
I know, last year, the year before, we presented some options, and we could certainly do that as we go forward. We could present options as far as, here's what we're looking at, here's what our numbers are telling us, but here's what we could do otherwise. We could do a 2%, we could do a 2.5%, we could do something else, and we can always bring those numbers. It's all in the projections. So, we can always bring those numbers forward, and you can make those decisions as we go forward.
Martha, I don't know if you know, your rough guess, what percentage of our households fall into the typical as opposed to the high user?
The majority of our households are in that, I'm gonna say about 85%. Better residential properties fall in that kind of average number. Not the low conservation, but the middle of the road. There's really not all that many that fall into the high category.
I'm gonna check my bill when I get home. I may be dropping down a category, okay?
Irrigation in the summer is typically the time that most people think, and that's what they use to identify their water bill, and their water bill is really a water bill, sewer bill, and a trash bill. So, I try to get people to look at them in the winter months, when it truly is the basic needs as opposed to irrigation. And, but I think it's about 85%. Debbie, is that?
I don't know for sure.
We don't have a lot of high users, and recently, I've been asking lots of individuals that I work with around here, how much is your water and sewer bill? So, people are getting used to that. I'm just trying to poll people in that way to get an idea and see what their thought of that is compared to their other bills from their TV to telephone. Find out how I compare with them, so that's my heads up.
Summertime irrigation is the opportunity to save money.
That is kind of my point there, yes.
And the opportunity to spend money, because of course, then you get excess use fees and things like that, so.
True. Thank you. Any questions, comments from the public? Let's have the 5% that's in the conservation group out in the audience here today. Bring it back to the commission for any action.
Mayor Davis, I move we adopt resolution number 19-7772, amending the comprehensive fee schedule to provide for water and wastewater rates effective January 1, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 19-7772. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. We'll go to 7.3.
Item 7.3, resolution number 19-7777, authorizing the city manager to execute renewals of agreement to provide administrative services for a self-funded health benefit plan and individual and aggregate stop loss with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you is the staff report outlining information for your consideration to renew our current agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas for third-party administration services along with the stop loss. The stop loss is for both individual claims and also for aggregate, meaning it would cover any expense over $150,000 per individual, or if our claims collectively exceeded 130% of what was projected, then it would cover us there. Just some insurance to help us protect our fund from being bankrupted, so to speak. Our current approach is self-funding. This is where we set aside premiums internally every month into a fund to pay these expenses rather than pay straight fees to an insurance company. And we have taken this approach since 1997. During that time, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas has been our third-party administrator. During the September 23 study session, Mr. Bob Charlesworth, our insurance consultant, he's with Charlesworth and Consultants, came and presented an overview of our current health insurance program, as well as a proposed marketing timeline, should the direction of the time been to go out and market our benefits and to come back with proposals. But the direction we got at that time was to accept what is considered a very favorable renewal, and both financially and because we have received very good service, both on administrative side as well as the experience of our employees. One item that was discussed during that time, during that study session, was to implement a, an early review, possibly in June, just to internally take a look at what is out there in the market, if there are services, if there's benefits, if there's other approaches to health insurance that we need to be considering, just to keep our thumb on what's going on and to utilize our consultant. And that way, if things are trending one way or another, or again, just to keep our thumb on what's going on. But we don't currently do that, so we did say that was a good approach that we might want to implement, and we do plan on doing that, starting early next summer. It would also give us time to work that in correlation with the budget process. From a financial standpoint, the good news was our stop loss premium did go down. The stop loss rates are calculated both on our previous claims, three years, as well as other providers or other insurers in the state, other individuals similar to ours that are in sort of a pooled approach. So, it isn't just us, but it's us and other organizations that make up that stop loss total or formula. So, that did decline. Our projected claims are anticipated to increase slightly. It looks like about $300,000. So, those two offset, and we are looking at an increase. Overall, still considered very, very favorable, particularly that we are coming in under trend still. We are looking at just over $7 million budgeted for 2020. We did increase our target balance for our reserve at $2 million this last year. The staff report also identified one of the benefits of remaining with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas is we have the ability to get their provider discounts, their in-network discounts, and that number was at 2.7 million at the time of our early renewal. I did receive information from Blue Cross today that through the end of October, we are looking at just over 4.3 million in discounts. So, also very favorable that they get the provider discounts that then can pass on to us. Staff will also consider other wellness options and keep looking at those. Those do not have to go along with this contract by any means, those are things that we can add on. I will back up and mention that this is just one element of our health insurance program. This is just our medical. We also contract for our prescription benefit management as well as our dental, and there's a dental item on the agenda today as well. I would be happy to answer any questions. The action at this time, the options would be to approve resolution number 197777, authorizing the city manager to execute the renewal. Another option would be to provide amendments to 19-7777, with amendments as the commission deems appropriate, to postpone consideration of resolution number 197777, or to deny this and provide staff direction on alternates, if any, for health insurance, third-party administration, and stop loss coverage.
Questions? Have you heard any comments or feedback suggesting our employees are not seeking needed medical care because of the 2,000 or 4,000 out-of-pocket expenses?
We have not heard that. We do try to remind employees that there's a lot of the services that are covered 100% if they are deemed preventative, so, you know, annual physicals and some of those things. We have a demographic of individuals that sometimes, just for whatever reason, don't go to the doctor as frequently, but we do try to keep reminding them that some of those services won't cost them anything.
And in the past, we've attempted a health fair to try to encourage employees to get some preliminary assessment at no cost, and with the intention of gathering information in the aggregate, so we could try to customize and improve our claims, and we discontinued that just because we didn't see the participation. So, I don't think it was a cost thing as much as kind of a personal preference and convenience, maybe.
I think in most families, that term demographic is code for men. All right, any questions from the public? Bring it back for any action.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve resolution number 19-7777, authorizing the city manager to execute agreement to provide administrative services for a self-funded health benefit plan and individual and aggregate stop loss with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas with the non-grandfathered 50/50 cost-share plan structure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 19-7777. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Motion carries five to nothing. And 7.4, while you're here.
Item 7.4, Resolution Number 19-7778, authorizing the city manager to amend the Delta Dental of Kansas Incorporated Agreement for Dental Care Benefits effective February 1, 2020.
So for your consideration is an amendment, and I do want to stress, that's a point of clarification. Earlier in the agenda planner, it was noted as a renewal. We are currently under a three-year agreement that was approved. This is the third year. So we could take no action and still continue with the current agreement, but for your consideration is two enhancements that Delta Dental has offered, and it is the unlimited cleanings. Currently, those are limited to two a year for any member that's covered on our plan. And then the Right Start for Kids program, which covers 100% those services for kids 12 and under, unlimited cleanings, and the, all those other services that kids might need, excluding orthodontia. So the, though, again, these are just two enhancements for your consideration. The, the anticipated impact based on Delta Dental's figures, looks like it could impact our plan approximately $10,000. The overall spend for dental compared to prescription and health insurance is currently about 6%. That's largely in part because our dental is capped at $1,500, and that cap is not changing. $1,500 maximum annual benefit by any of our plan members covered. This cap would still apply, but it just opens up those services should we opt to go that route. Again, I would be happy to answer any questions. The, the action that you would have the ability to take would be to move forward by adding both the Right Start for Kids and the unlimited cleanings, to opt to add for either of them independently, or to do nothing at this time and continue with our current agreement with Delta.
Our current agreement, is there, is it two cleanings a year?
Yes.
That's standard, okay.
It is.
And by adding that, we have a 1% increase? Is that what you're?
Yeah, they, they estimated, I think for the unlimited cleanings was one, and the Right Start for Kids, one and a half, or vice versa. Let me double-check. Yes, 1% anticipated for the unlimited cleanings and the 1.5% potentially for the Right Start for Kids. And cumulatively, those were estimating about $10,000 impact.
And the Right Start for Kids really expands the benefits for those under 12, correct?
Right, where currently, the individuals would have to come up with 20%, it would waive that 20%, and everything would be covered for those 12 and under.
Yeah, I kind of like the Right Start for Kids. The unlimited cleaning, I was trying to think, who wants to go to the dentist more than twice a year, but.
Guilty. I love getting my teeth cleaned, sorry.
Well, there are diseases such as heart attack, dental hygiene is a risk factor if it's not kept up, so there may be some hidden savings down the road. It'll show up on the medical side, and that's the dental side.
The dental side, yeah.
All righty. Any other questions, comments from the public? I think we're ready for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Resolution, Resolution Number 19778, authorizing the city manager to amend the Delta Dental of Kansas agreement to add unlimited cleanings and the Right Start for Kids programs.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 19-7778. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Any development business or other business?
Other business, I had a quick question. I know we were discussing the BSL, and I, at one time, Mr. Scragg stated that you maybe had some material that would be beneficial, that would help prepare, because I'm at a loss as to kind of where to head on this.
Actually, Chris Cotton was able to find a, a book, and I don't recall the title off the top of my head, but it, it purports to be an objective analysis of the myths and, and, you know, thought process regarding pit bulls. I've read it, it's not a lot, it's not very many pages long. I was able to read it in about two sittings over a weekend, and I've been reluctant to share that with you. Number one, I wanted to be sure that it was objective, and number two, didn't want to assign you homework prematurely, but that probably is a document that has more volume than you might typically just sit down and read as part of a packet. So it, and we have copies that we can provide you that might be useful for you to take a look at in preparation.
And you, you have copies in hand? Because if not, if you share the?
Chris actually went ahead and bought a copy for me and, and for Commissioners, and I really just wanted to get an opportunity to review it and make sure that it, you know, seemed to be appropriate. It, it attempts to inventory kind of all the different, you know, point, counterpoints that seem to come up repeatedly as related to breed-specific legislation. The author ends up with a conclusion, so I can't say that it's fully, you know, objective or impartial, but they try to walk you through kind of the thought process and the facts behind it.
Is there a chance we could get that delivered with this next, this Thursday with our packet or something?
If that's something that you're comfortable with, I'd be happy to do that.
Because it may give us a week or two to read it and digest it a little bit, and.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, and we'll, in some fashion, make it known to Ms. Corrales and others that, you know, that's a document that you have in your possession, so that they're aware of it as well.
Yeah. All right, and. Oh, I'm sorry, you know, I knew you'd raised your hand. My brain just said, okay, she's.
No, that's, no, that's okay. And I just wanted to let folks who know who are planning on attending the Planning Commission meeting tomorrow, that the entire packet is now posted online? Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. In fact, it might, to elaborate a little bit further, Commissioner Hodges, I think, was the first person to catch yesterday evening that the packet that got posted online was a large file that was dealt with in two parts, and inadvertently, part one was posted, was merged together twice, thinking that was the correct packet. So we ended up with duplication of part one and didn't post part two. And unfortunately, part two included a very extensive report on Grand Prairie. So we were, we weren't able to really sort that out yesterday evening, but first thing this morning, I think by 8:30, we were able to get that posted. We've also then had some conversation with Dr. Hanke, who's been kind of a point of contact about their, his request on behalf of the residents of the subdivision for that item to be postponed so that they have the opportunity to, to review that additional information. And we've communicated with him after conferring with city attorney. We don't feel like staff has the authority just to, you know, unilaterally remove it from the Planning Commission agenda, so we've kind of walked through an approach that we're willing to take to try to suggest to the, call to the attention of the Planning Commission, suggest they could amend the agenda to take that item, postponement up first, so that group of citizens doesn't have to sit through what might be a lengthy meeting otherwise, as well as then to suggest to the Planning Commission that, you know, there's a request to postpone it, that they might want to take that up before we launch into a staff report. Again, to try to, to be responsive to their concern about their time and the effectiveness of, of that approach. So we're trying to walk the Planning Commission through that, ultimately defer to the Planning Commission on how they wish to proceed, but be as responsive as we can due to that unintended error. So, but yes, that, it is now posted online, it's available.
It is posted online, and that will be a decision that the Planning Commission will be making, hopefully, at the, at the beginning of their meeting tomorrow, whether or not they want to make any changes to that.
Correct, and staff's prepared to recommend that, you know, possible approach is to just proactively postpone it and not go through the staff report and not, take, take comment from anybody that's there that wishes to address them, but then go ahead and postpone it, so they don't feel an obligation to sit through the staff report twice and respond once without the benefit of having reviewed it and then respond a second time after they've had an opportunity to review it. So we're trying to facilitate an effective use of their time in light of the mistake.
Thank you.
Question, hey?
Moved and seconded to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will be back on December 9.
You going in the morning?
Oh, yeah.